It's a pleasure to have folks here in the chambers with us and the folks watching at home on our video later on this week. Remember, we air four times a day, so if you are looking for something exciting to watch, be sure and tune into our council meetings. And if you have some feedback or thoughts, we'd always love to hear from you. We open our meeting this evening with an invocation from Reverend Dr. George Smith from Lewisville Baptist Church. Thank you for being here tonight. It will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Ken Sadler. If you'll stand, if you're able, please.
You can pray with me. While I do thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord, for the invitation to open in prayer this time together. Father, like Daniel and Ezekiel and Jeremiah, who were all serving the people from different places during a similar time, God, I pray for those gathered here who are doing the same, serving the people from different backgrounds and different perspectives. Lord, tonight, I pray that you honor that service and that intention, Father, that you open ears, Lord, that you allow us to speak in wisdom this evening. And, God, we thank you for your presence with us. And you, as the founder of government, God, are in charge of the things that take place. And, Lord, we pray, as always, in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, I invite you to meet our council members as we do our roll call of whether their presence or absence. So if they're here, you will hear their name in their introduction.
Hi, I'm Jeff Singer.
Good evening, I'm Ed Smith.
Good evening.
And I'm Sandra Mock.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Green.
Ken Sadler.
And I'm Fred Franklin. It's a pleasure to serve as a council member.
We also have with us tonight our town manager Hank Perkins, our town attorney Beau Howf. Over on this side of the room, we have Pam Orell, not Oral, as I often refer to her as, our finance director. Mrs. Joyce Walker, our town clerk. Mr. Marty Myers sitting back here in the second row in the chief seat section. Mr. George Hauser fiddling with the lenses and focus. And like to introduce and welcome the newest member of our town staff, Ms. Rachel Delmonico, just like the steak. That's how I remember it. But she joined us officially this week.
Dominican.
You got close.
Delmonico is Dominican.
Steak, Mike.
Excuse me, Rachel. Ms. Rachel Delmonico. And I'll be better next time. Great to have you with us. We know to expect great things from you over the next months and years ahead as we really sharpen up our communication tools. And we're glad to have you onboard. With that, we have an agenda in front of us, council. Since our briefing session, we do have one new addition, and that's a request from the Lewisville Area Arts Council for a donation of $1,000 to support an event they're holding in the park. That's A, under New Business. And if there are no other changes or additions to the agenda, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay. It sounded like Mr. Zinger made the motion, Mr. Smith made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, our consent agenda.
Okay. The consent agenda this evening consists of four items. The first is Resolution 2016-038 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for July 2016. The approval of council briefing inaction minutes from August 4, 2016. The approval of council meeting minutes from August 11, 2016. And lastly, Resolution 2016-039, accepting the resignation of Nathan Ziegler from the Lewisville Owning Board of Adjustment.
Ladies and gentlemen, our consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council, such as our financial reports and minutes. The council has ample opportunity to review this before this meeting. They're disposed of as a group during our consent agenda. However, any council member can pull any item off individually to be discussed and voted on by itself. If there are no further discussions on the consent agenda, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. We have noses at the finish. We're going to give it to Mrs. Mock for the motion and Mr. Franklin for the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ms. Walker?
Yes, you know, an appointment of Vance Town Horner, a town member to the Owning Board of Adjustment, who will be hopefully completing Mr. Ziegler's term.
Very good. And Mr. Horner has applied several times to participate in our town committees and boards. And we hope the third time is a lucky time for him. Any questions for Ms. Walker on this appointment? Very good. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
So moved.
Well, I'll tell you, we are anxious tonight. Ms. Mock, I'm going to give you the motion. And Mr. Zinger, you'll have the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mrs. Walker, you are up again.
Well, actually, the mayor's up here. This is Proclamation 2016-001. And this is proclaiming September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Those states have been approved by the votes in Washington, D.C. as provided by Whitey Asimower back in 1950.
And you handled the introduction far better than I would have. So thank you very much on this. We have with us in our audience Ms. Hoosier and also Ms. Denzmore. Very good. They're both representing the daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, okay? And this is an annual proclamation that we give. It's a proclamation that recognizes the Constitution of the United States of America, embodies the principles of limited government, and a republic dedicated to rule by law and not by individuals. And that as September 17, 2016, marks the 229th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention of 1787. And whereas in celebrating the anniversary of the significant document, we honor and preserve the foundations of liberty and justice for every American citizen. Now for therapy resolved, Lewisville Town Council of Lewisville, North Carolina proclaimed September 17 through 23, 2016 as Constitution Week. In Lewisville, I urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideas established by the framers of the Constitution as we work with each other to secure the blessings of liberty in ourselves and our posterity, given in our hand and seal this eighth day of September 2016. Want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Zinger makes the motion. Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? Very good. Thank you, ladies, for being here. And thank you for reminding us of the importance of our action to recognize this absolutely astounding document in American history and in the world. Dariel, I believe I have the official copy up here for you, so we can get it to you as you get ready to leave. Or I can fold it up and send it out to you right now, but we'll probably save it. Ladies and gentlemen, we have three opportunities to speak.
Excuse me, Mayor. Since we have a motion and a second, how about calling for a move, please?
You know, I just assumed that we'd all be in favor of the American Constitution.
Since it was formalized.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Franklin, for that reminder. Close one. Three opportunities tonight for you to address the council. Two of those are public forums, one which occurs now and one which will occur at the end of the meeting. We also have a public hearing tonight on an amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance having to do with the definition of signs. If you're here to speak on the UDO amendment during the public hearing, please hold your comments to that point in time. With that, we'll open the first public forum. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the council this evening? Anybody at all? Alrighty. With that, I will close the first opportunity to speak in our public forum. And now we'll move on to our public hearing. Mr. Myers.
Mayor, council, you have a copy of the resolution as well as the amended text in your drop box that was prepared by Ms. Walker for our briefing meeting last week. As we went over last week, we have added some language to our existing sign definition. As you can see there, there are areas of the definition that are highlighted in red print, and then they're highlighted as well. That's the actual language that has been added to the definition to address things that previously were not addressed by this definition, such as a declaration or a definition for what public art would be and what constitutes public art. And then the other was language that would actually allow us to address signage that might be located, say, off the public right-of-way. A good example of that would be existing shopping centers where you have signage for the various businesses that are located within the shopping center. However, the signage itself does not face the public roadway, but faces inward toward the interior of the shopping center. For those folks in the audience, I'll take just a minute or two, and I'll actually read the definition. And then should you folks have any questions, I'd be glad to try to address those. Sign "Any form of publicity which is visible from any public way communicating information or directing attention to an individual, business, commodity, activity, or product by means of words, lettering, parts of letters, figures, numerals, phrases, sentences, emblems, devices, designs, trade names, or trademarks, or other pictorial matter designed to convey such information as displayed by means of paint, bills, posters, panels, or other devices erected on an open framework or attached otherwise, applied to stakes, posts, poles, trees, buildings, or other structures or supports. As used in this section, public ways shall include streets as well as travel and pedestrian areas interior to shopping centers, including but not limited to parking areas. Public art defined as items expressing creative skill or imagination in a visual form such as painting or sculpture, which are intended to beautify or provide aesthetic influences to public areas or areas which are visible from the public realm, and not intended to identify or draw attention to a product, service, or business, shall not constitute a sign under this ordinance." So what we have here is just an expansion of sorts. It does not include any regulations. This is just simply our definition for future reference as to what constitutes a sign as we move forward. There could very well be additional regulations that will come before the planning board in this town council that would be supportive of the intent of this new definition. But we don't have those two ready for you at this time.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Myers? With that, we'll open the public hearing on the UDO definition for signs. It's ordinance 2016-028. Anybody here to speak in support of or in opposition to the matter before the council? Anyone at all? Very good. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, your thoughts?
Just for a matter of clarity, so what we're doing is we're separating out these things and calling it art. But we're not actually regulating it. We're just separating it out and calling it art. Okay? And currently, we don't have any regulations on it anyway, either, right?
I might try to be very brief, but add, as it is right now, there's a question as to whether what might be considered as public art under this definition might possibly qualify as a sign under certain circumstances. And so what this really does is it moves away some potential lack of clarity so that public art is protected and not deemed to be a sign. And it's also beneficial to those business owners primarily who might want to display art and not fear that it might be considered a sign when it's not.
Any other comments?
My only concern would be, is who defines what is art? And so that would be my only...
And I guess that is not too much different than the definition of another term that the Supreme Court has said. You know, I'm not sure exactly whether we can define it with, you know, with clear clarity, but we know it when we see it. But I've tried to...
That makes me feel a whole lot better.
I've tried to be as broad. The idea is any form of visual expression that does not, by its nature, try to draw attention to the business at which it's located.
Any additional questions? Further discussion? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Mr. Green makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Second?
I'm opposed.
Opposed. Okay. So we have a 6-1 with Mr. Zinger in opposition. New Business, the new item on the agenda. Pam, if you will take a few moments and explain this to us.
We have before you a request from the Lewisville Area Arts Council. They are requesting a donation of $1,000. And this is to support the 25th anniversary celebration of the Lewisville Area Arts Council music in the park that they have planned with the Enchell for Sway on October 8.
Counsel, this came to us late in the process. We unfortunately missed the opportunity to have our grants committee review this particular proposal prior to it coming here. I think we felt because of the urgent nature of the request and the timeframe for which the money is requested, that we would kind of expedite this through the council for discussion and to see what your feelings are. Probably those of you who wish to make a comment, this would be a good time to kind of ask questions or see how we need to steer this.
I guess my only question was, is this a last-minute thing? I mean, usually when we have to book somebody, it's so far in advance. I'm just wondering.
The request came in Wednesday, last Wednesday.
Yeah, that'd be last minute.
Yeah. And also, the event is the 8th of October, so that's why I can't wait.
No, no, I understand. It just seems like usually when we book stuff, it's like six months in advance.
Very true.
Nine months in advance or something. That's my only question.
So is I here to represent the LAAC to talk about this?
I believe, Ms. Walker, you informed Ms. Ingram that we were going to be discussing this this evening.
I took a mail this morning.
Thank you.
When next does Parks and Recreation meet?
Monday.
This coming Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Is it... This is the sort of event they would typically...
This isn't a town event. This is the...
I understand. But it's the sort of event that Parks and Recreation would typically put on, right?
Yes.
I mean, similar to...
It's similar. Yes.
I'm just a little concerned in reading the paperwork that they haven't held an event since 2005, according to their paperwork, which is 11 years ago, and then to make a last-minute request within 30 days of their event. It doesn't seem very well-planned and thought out in advance.
Not to put you on the spot, but the only individual that I didn't introduce tonight in the chamber is Marcy Gallman, who is the chairman of our Parks and Recreation Committee. Marcy, I'm not putting you on the spot. You can certainly pass on this opportunity. But do you have any thoughts that you might want to share?
Well, it had to come before our board, right? This is what my convention mentioned this evening. So I'm kind of a little bit, no thoughts at the moment, other than I would think an event like this needs to be pre-planned. I think it is a little last-minute. And something of this thing was not, it was the Arts Council, the LAAC, or whatever it is. It's something that is not, again, like Parks and Rec, meaning that they operate a little differently on the city. But Parks and Rec, I think, that does take months and months in the planning just because you want to have advertisement. You want to be sure to draw a really good crowd because that's what we find ourselves on, right? We're doing it, you know, with good people. So without even a month's notice here, you know, again, not knowing what their full intentions are here, making a thousand dollars, I'm assuming they'd be for a band, but I'm just kidding. Are they putting on a bit outside of what this is, or to coincide with the band? Again, I would just say we need to take months and months to prepare. I'm just trying to comment in this moment about what their requisition sheet is.
Thank you.
And who's the proposed audience for this?
Public.
Just in general.
Looks like it includes three bands, a contest giveaway, presentation of a couple memorial bricks, the announcement of the new Lewisville 2017 Lewisville Queen is some of the items that are listed, and announcements pertaining to the Civic Club, the Historical Society, the Recycle Committee, and just general announcements of the town.
If I may ask, Dariel, since you're on the Historical Committee, were you group contracted in any way about this?
I don't really...
So your group's not aware of this?
Yeah, it's just about the matter. The Lewisville Arts Council, people that are actually concerned and we can celebrate people there, because they're our hardest group. I don't know how many more of this society is now. Of course, you're right, you have to ask to be made into a part of that community. I'm not aware of it.
I mean, Dr. Sadler, I believe makes a good point that there is opportunity, I guess, if we wanted to refer this to a Parks and Rec meeting coming up on Monday, for your kind of recommendation, we would probably need to shift the authority to grant the $1,000 to them based on their recommendation. I'm not sure how the mechanics of that would work.
One thing that caught my eye to start with is they're calling it the 25th anniversary. We just had a 25th anniversary for the town. That square was not constructed 25 years ago, and there was not any music on the park 25 years ago.
There was no park.
It took a number of years after the town incorporated on August the 13th of 19...whatever. Sorry. But before the town, before the square was actually constructed and dedicated and so forth, and I'm sure that there was an event that the Lewisville Area Arts Council...we had no other parks in town prior to the town square. So that's one thing, if you will. It seems to me that there's piggybacking off of the town being 25 years old, which in fact, we haven't had the town square for 25 years. This is the first thing. And again, it's been somewhat thrown together very quickly, obviously. I'm not opposed to them having an event. I'd like for it to be vetted by our Parks and Recreation Board. And then some...I don't know that the October date can be met at this late of the time. If they were to select a date still in November or something, that date might be met. That's where I'm getting that. And, you know, I actually serve as one of the subcommittee members. And if we had been reviewing this in a timely manner, if we'd gotten it in a timely manner, I would still have these same questions. There's a reason I'm bringing it up now, you know? I would be inclined, had we had the committee meeting, not to go, not to recommend the council at this point in time. It would be my inclination.
Other committee members, do you have any thoughts? Ms. Walker?
I just wanted to clarify. The 25th anniversary that Ms. Stevens is talking to is the 25th anniversary of the LAAC. They too are now with some...
Okay.
And we just celebrated the 25th anniversary of the Lewisville Historical Society, which was also founded in July of 1991. So all of them just happened together at the same time. That was the reference to the 25th.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Can I...The LAAC does have the venue booked for that day. So regardless of whether or not they are funded, they may still elect to go forward, regardless of whether or not this group votes to give them the money.
Certainly.
Thank you for that information.
Any additional thoughts?
I think they have some great ideas, but like, some of the other ones, I think Parks and Recs need to take a look at it.
Wouldn't it be an accurate encapsulation of the sentence expressed over the last few minutes that we would thank the Lewisville Area Arts Council for the opportunity to participate in the funding of their event? However, with this short lead time, we feel that the, that our investment in the event could be better served with a little more lead time, a little more publicity, a little more coordination with some of the other events through Parks and Recreation that are going on. And we encourage them to consider possibly doing this event or another event in the spring of next year, and maybe a whole series of events that they could coordinate with our Parks and Recreation Department.
Can we leave open the opportunity to retroactively supply this $1,000 on the back end after, I mean, instead of upfront, as the council addresses after the fact? Mr. Attorney? Mr. Manager?
Yes, that would be something you could do. I would imagine that it wouldn't, at that point, it would not be a sponsorship of this event. It would be a donation or a grant to the LAAC for its purposes, you know? But it would be difficult to sponsor on the back end an event that occurred previously. Certainly, that's something you could do. You could give that...If you were so inclined, having seen what occurs, you might give some sort of a grant in this amount or some other amount that it might be appropriate to the council in recognition and thanks for what they did, if that's what you determine. But I think that would not be out of line.
At this point, Mayor, I would like to encourage the leadership, if you will, of the LAAC to attend the Parks and Rec next meeting and brief them such that if October, November timeframe, the council sees fit to provide them a grant of whatever, we can. Doesn't necessarily have to be, as our attorney stated, for sponsorship of the event. I'm just still reluctant on the front side of doing things that is going to transpire in less than a month.
The only consideration there, I think, is we hold out the potential promise of funding. But we don't know exactly what criteria we would say yes or no to that. Is it based on attendance? Is it based on quality of the performances? I'm a little soft on that, on what we would kind of say, yeah, you did a good job.
I'd just like for us to reconsider it in the future, either briefings or council meetings.
Yeah, I think it's always our prerogative to revisit something. But I want to be careful that we don't, we don't hold out the potential promise of post-event funding without some kind of criteria. Or I think any individual council member can bring a request before the council for funding of any project and for consideration and discussion by the council. So I think your request is in line.
Okay.
You know, my statement was to bring it before Parks and Recreation. I don't know how full your agenda is for Monday. But to bring it before them and have them, to the extent they can, make a determination, make a recommendation or not with regard to this event. And we could leave with you then the authority to make the grant based on the input from the, I mean, if you were inclined to do so, based on the recommendation or lack thereof of the Parks and Recreation. That was the intent of my statement.
Can I have a budget amendment? We don't fund this type of thing.
Counsel, thoughts?
How do we wrap this?
Mr. Perkins?
Regardless of what you do, if there's the possibility before the next meeting that you're going to give the money, we will need a budget amendment tonight. That was going to be the next thing, if you recommended the money.
I think there's the floor in the way. The budget amendment doesn't bind you to spend...
Doesn't obligate us to the expenditure. Yeah.
And I think, I think in response to your question about how you kind of button this up is you can do a couple of different things. One of them would be to... One of them would be to authorize the expenditure of the money conditioned upon the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Department. I think you're not, you know, prohibited from doing it in that way, so it would be grant, do the grant conditioned upon approval by Parks and Recreation. It's a little, certainly that's a little bit out of the ordinary, but I think all of what you have before you tonight's a little bit out of the ordinary.
Council members, would anybody like to actually make that as a motion?
That actually is, it was my intent, so it would be my motion to do that.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Dr. Sadler, seconded by Mr. Franklin. Any further discussion?
The only question I have, you know, maybe another person will show up, maybe, you know. Are we guaranteed that this one person is going to show?
For the Parks and Recreation?
Yeah.
I think it'd be kind of a fait accompli if that occurred.
You mean LAAC?
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I think in response to Councilman Green, and what you just said, the fait accompli, I mean, if there's not enough interest to show up for the Park and Recreation, I think it's a done, I mean, it determines what the action should be.
Very good. Any additional discussion?
Ms. Walker had something.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just confused, what is the number, that number is two zero?
Let us go ahead and get the motion passed, and then we'll come back and do the budget ordinance, if that's okay. I think it'd be two separate, two separate motions. Is that okay?
Make that part of it.
You want to make it part of your, to do the budget resolution?
I would not be opposed to incorporating the ordinance number.
Neither, so.
Okay, the motion has been amended, the second, second or two, the motion has accepted the amendment. Any further discussion?
I would just question the budget amendment amount to be, okay, as long as that's recorded in the minutes, that's, okay.
And that comes out of what? The grant fund, where does it come from?
It'll come out of governing body.
Out of governing body, well, that's such kind of a precedent, where we've not funded events.
Well, is that not where it would come from anyway?
Yeah.
Because it does, okay.
It'll come from fund balance, but it's being paid out of governing body.
Okay, very good.
It will come out of fund balance and part of every event.
Great. Any further discussion?
So I'm clear, so we're talking about a budget amendment for up to $1,000 or $4,000, and then we're going to leave it up to the Parks and Rec to, we're going to ask them to meet with this group, right?
They'll attend the Monday meeting of the Parks and Recreation.
Right, and based on that information, they'll decide whether they go forward or not, correct?
Based on the recommendation to the council, and as your representative, I think duly noted, will make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Very good, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. You have your resolution? You have, Marcy, make room for them on your agenda. Ms. Walker, will you please notify by phone call and not just email, if we can read some?
Uh-uh.
That'd be great, thank you very much. We have no unfinished business this evening. Hank, we're down to our upcoming events.
Okay, upcoming events at Shallowford Square. Last weekend, we had our first weekend of play productions of Tarzan. This weekend, starting tomorrow on Friday, the 9th, then Saturday and Sunday, we will have the second weekend of Tarzan as well. Moving on to the 23rd of this month, Friday, we have movie night, it would be Norm of the North, is that correct? Yeah, and then moving, last date I'll mention, is October 7th, Friday, we will have another movie night, and I'm not sure what that movie is yet.
Very good. And thanks to council members, I hope it was a rewarding experience this last weekend, for those of you who were able to introduce the play, and those of you who will be doing it this next weekend, I hope you all enjoy it and have a good time. I do want to reflect just for a second, and we did have a more-than-capacity crowd on Saturday evening, and folks were pretty packed up. Our Parks and Rec Chairman, Ms. Gallman, was able to speak with the coordinator of the plays, and they're going to be, they're going to be opening up a wider section of the square for people to sit, so we should alleviate that problem of overcrowding. It's a good and a bad problem, it's a great problem, we had that many people there, but it was a bit tight for those in attendance, so I think we solved that for this weekend. Thank you, Marcy, for doing that, that was last minute, certainly very efficient on your part. Okay, we're now at the second time for our public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time? Anybody at all? Very good, then we will move on to council. Do you have any comments before we adjourn? Any comments?
Panthers are kicking off tonight.
I think you'll be home by kickoff.
I know.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here, you folks from the Daughters of American Revolution, thank you for being here, Marcy, thanks for being here. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for watching at home. Reverend Dr. Smith, it's always good to have folks from your congregation, in addition to this fellow sitting on my left, in attendance. Counsel, with that, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
It was moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Zinger. Any further discussion? Very good, thank you, we're adjourned.